Go ahead and begin our council meeting for January twenty eighth, Tuesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Appreciate everybody being here. We'll go ahead and begin tonight with opening remarks. Jared will do that, and then we'll follow with the pledge of allegiance by.
Our good kind, thank you Father. I'm so very thankful for this wonderful day, or thankful for this community that we live in. Thankful for those that live here. So appreciative of the things that I was done for us, and please bless us that we can make good decisions and be good stewards of the city and do the things that please thee, and I say the same things to Jesus Christ.
All right. Prepare after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and get, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda and timeframe to see you. A second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Do a roll call. Jim, we'll start with you again.
Jim Chase.
Jared Peterson.
Nelson Abbott.
Ty Ellis.
Tricia Thomas.
Corey Thompson.
All right, and our first matter of business before we get into the public forum, I'd like to welcome Corey to be on our council.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
What's yours to serving with you?
Yep, thank you. You as well, sir. Sorry for last week. I was in Texas.
And just to remind us all, as city council and myself as the mayor, that sometimes these meetings can be a little on the fun side, so to speak, but I want to encourage everybody and let them, you know, that see a lot of meetings in public forum now that don't have a lot of civil discourse, and but that's what we're about, and even though we can disagree with one another, we all walk out of here with no ill feelings towards anybody. So if that's not the case, you can have those feelings, I don't know about them, after the meeting, so. It's fun to be on the council as long as we're all willing to live with each other and appreciate their differences. All right, public forum, Royce. Do we have anybody signed up for public forum?
No.
Okay, moving on, public forum. First item of discussion tonight will be mayor pro temp. We've got to pick a mayor pro temp tonight, right? Nelson's been serving that in the last, I don't know how many years. I honestly, I don't know. So it's a simple process. I don't have anybody in mind, so if the council wants to nominate and pick someone, that would be awesome. It doesn't happen very often, but once in a while you end up doing the
I think he did it once last year.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Yeah, that's I honestly, I'm already at my, you know, it's like, that's when I hope they break. Until I can call Nelson on the phone and say, hey, no.
Yeah, and I walk outside and I see a river coming down the road.
But we don't have those anymore.
We won't see that anymore.
Never again. If it's not broken, don't fix it. I think we, I nominate Nelson.
I want to nominate the new guy.
Yeah.
I'm highly confident I do not have the experience to take that job. That's very kind of you, however.
No, that was not, that was a compliment. That was a life.
With that in mind, I will second Nelson's nomination. If that's my option.
Yeah, I think that was a shot fired across the bow to let you know. You don't want to miss a meeting. You might end up serving your position.
That's true.
Okay. Anybody else? I mean, Nelson, are you willing to do it?
Yeah, I'm willing to do it.
If somebody else would want to do it?
Oh yeah, if somebody wants, else wants to.
If someone wants to.
Then I'm sure that we could get that, so.
I mean, we're not dumb. We can talk.
Okay, so I'll entertain that motion.
All right, then I will go ahead and motion that Mr. Nelson Abbott continue serving as the mayor pro temp for Elkridge City.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And opposed? No, it's unanimous. All right, thank you for the unanimous. I'll try not to, I'll try not to, you know, dump too many things on.
No, no, no.
Take as much vacation as you want. We got Nelson.
All right, water connection with Salem City. Now, if you remember a while back, we had discussed with the Public Works Director, and then, I don't know if the engineer was here or not, I don't know who's here with us, but I'm doing a cross-connection between Salem and Elkridge down lower, more on the north side of town, right? Down where Dean is building his new subdivision right now. We had that conversation. In theory, we kinda, we didn't block it. We didn't say it wouldn't be something we would do, right? And I think they've gone to the next step now where they kind of want to move forward on this, right? And you were at a meeting, you guys, was that true, just lately?
No, McKay and I were.
Oh, McKay and you. So you want to give us a quick update on that?
Yeah, we went and met with Bruce Ward and with Dean. It is definitely tied into his new development down there. They're requiring this from him as a redundancy issue, because they're not able to provide that at this point. There is benefit to Elkridge, but it is definitely a Salem benefit, a lot more benefit to Salem. If we were ever to turn the valves our way, probably the best we would do, the very best, would be Skyhawk.
Yeah. You just couldn't get enough pressure.
With that, we would probably have to entertain a booster station if that is a source that we want for redundancy.
But we have it already, right?
We have it through the wells.
Through the wells.
Yeah.
We're certainly in better position than we've ever been.
Yeah. Well, so would they, they wouldn't use our water unless they need to, right? It's worth.
So is there going to be like a big old meter on that line in case we do?
Yes, there'll be meters, check valves.
Hard to see, I'd assume.
And they're funding it all?
They're funding it. They'll do all maintenance, all reports to the state.
Correct.
This is redundancy.
This is redundancy with an emphasis for that subdivision.
So the meter that's down, it's my question, do we have the ability to read that meter, or is it them coming to us with the?
It would all be part of what you guys do with the interlocal.
Yeah, through this process.
What we're going to do right here, because, go ahead and move forward. I would want a way to be able to monitor that, so that we would know if there was a leak between those areas.
Yeah, well, if it ever got used for its purpose, we want to know much more.
Normally, the whole valves are off.
Yeah, so there would be.
Or if there's one, it's a single valve, but I don't know how it works.
Does the city of Salem want us to do this?
Oh yeah.
Yes.
So like, is it being a good neighbor? I'm just saying like.
It is being a good neighbor.
It is being a good neighbor.
Again, it benefits them more than it would Elkridge.
But hey, if we need something then, right? Remember when we?
Well, and so here's, I've been doing mental gymnastics over this all since I got the paperwork, because this whole entire area actually used to be in our city. The people that owned that ground came to us and said, we don't want to be a part of your city. We want to be Salem. And my first inclination was just, no, 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 we don't need to connect to their system. We don't need to provide them with that. But then I was reminded by my wife that when our wells went down and we had to go get water, where did we go? We went right over here to this hydrant, and we hooked onto it, and we filled our trucks over and over, and we used their water to water our trucks. I mean, we're talking fire trucks we filled, big fire trucks. Woodland Hills came over and helped, and I thought, you know what? As much as I don't want to, I think we should. So my better half.
I mean, we did have.
And there will be a time through, so they could say through development, that they'll be able to provide the redundancy within their system.
Right.
So then the only benefit will be to us if we need it. Again, at this moment, probably the Skyhawk would be.
Royce, is there any limit, like, if we were to assume that Salem decided to use this connection, is there any limit to the amount of water they could take? I mean, granted that it's being metered, but is there any cap?
I think that again, would happen through the interlocal.
That would go through the interlocal. I think at this point, we're just going to get the councils moved to go to interlocal.
You just work the lock, or somebody shuts the valve off.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, because I would think that part of the interlocal should dictate that it's for emergency use only.
Yeah, I think so.
Now, I know like, I don't know, I remember seeing some signs. I don't know if like last year, they still have the water on Tuesday and Thursday thing. I don't know.
Last year, they had that.
I mean, if they fix, I mean, I, I don't want this to be a, I agree with everything that's been said, be good neighbors where, I don't want this to be like an out where where, you know, it's going to prevent them from adding some more, you know, wells or whatever they need. I mean, I, you know.
This isn't so they can remove the water restrictions.
Well, the reason, the reason that they're pushing for it is because for this development to have redundancy, they have to put a very long pipe in. It just costs a lot more. That's why.
That pipe will eventually go in through development.
Right.
It will, and they said through development.
This would be primarily for fire protection, put it down there.
It might be for using.
Emergency.
Yeah.
It's a two to two emergency.
Yeah, who decides what's an emergency?
No, you know, I think as we open this up and we start having this dialogue, maybe part of what we discuss is street lights are in harmony with our dark sky compliance and other things like that.
I almost said that. I almost said.
It's part of this process, say, look, you know, we're going to scratch your back, you scratch ours. Let's, let's do that, so that it doesn't look like we got a landing strip for planes at night. Because they are substantially brighter than what we have.
Yeah, maybe we could ask.
We did that with basic.
It's worth asking, right?
I mean, it's an ask, as we go through this process. I bet we can.
We might have a little pull.
So my, my, my position is that you ought to move this forward to interlocal, so they can work on the details and get it in writing.
Let's do the right thing.
With the intention that you're going to, with the intention that you're going to pass it.
Yes, yeah, we're not going to waste.
Unless the interlocal is really skewed hard the other way, which I don't think it would be, so.
So will they be drafting that?
They would be drafting.
Yeah.
Well, and like I said, not for what it's worth, my only concern would be that Elkridge would have to have some say in stopping that if for some reason the amount of water that was pulling through impacted our residents.
As much as I love Salem, if they take so much water that it's causing an impact on Elkridge, then we need to be able to stop that.
How many homes is that for?
Certainly can't cause, can't cause a
Not a ton, right?
What am I trying to say? A situation where we don't have a water emergency.
Right.
Right.
We have to maintain.
And all we got to do is have a valve
Tank levels and.
In our city that I can operate if I need to.
Right.
Not only will be valves in Nepal, but wherever they hook onto our pipe, we'll have a valve there.
Well, can we be honest here? They're not going to want to use the water anyway, because it's going to cost a lot more to use our water than their own, correct?
I don't know.
Well, it's only part of the thing. I mean, I, you know, it's if you're going to charge, or at what point you start charging, or.
What if? We have to charge, right?
Well, I would suspect, yeah.
You know, unless it
First ten thousand gallons they get for free, and then they'll be spared.
Do they charge us for the fire trucks? Do they charge us? I mean, if it's a situation that warrants.
No, you're right. If it's a true emergency, then absolutely. You're right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a Corey. I think there needs to be a, I don't like a better word, there needs to be an abuse paragraph in there. Whatever, well, no, there needs to be.
The question is, what constitutes an emergency?
Well, if they can't water.
And who decides?
Well, I would say if they wouldn't have other, if they wouldn't have water otherwise, I'd say that's a pretty good emergency.
I do too.
So if somebody breaks a water line and they have to dig it up, take more hours, they can turn ours on.
Can they just turn it on, or do they have to get?
We have to take into account it, though.
That's the meter.
With the meter. We have to take into account it, whether we charge it or not.
So would it be better to have that meter in our city?
No.
Would this be a meter that measures both ways?
Yeah, that's what they were talking.
That's what they.
Well, yeah, I don't know how that would work out, because of check valves and stuff, they might have to have two, one each way. I don't know. But once they draw it out, then we'll know for sure.
Right.
So let's move it forward.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
We'll look at the details that comes.
Do we have to have a motion?
No.
So, yeah.
We'll just see what they come up with on the local side.
I just want to make sure that you guys are agreement, so that when we do go through all the work to the local owner local bit, you're still in favor of that. Okay, that way. All right. Why don't you take this next one there, mayor pro temp? Okay, we did go through, cleaned it up. Thank you for doing that.
And I appreciate that. I put that PhD of mine, the recent high school one, did not disappoint when it came to the grammar. We have good staff. You know, like, the political climate in this country is definitely shifting, and, I mean, just yesterday, four new bills were introduced in our state that are aimed at controlling and changing rights related to the Second Amendment, here in the state of Utah. Kind of bothers me. I feel like this is a way for us to make a statement, let people know that we support the Second Amendment, and I think that we, along with other communities, which will follow, I'm sure, can send a clear message to our state legislature, so that they won't even bother with passing ordinances to then have referendums and other things coming at them like to do with the tax piece. Because I think they will have if they go down these roads. You know, I read through it again today, just to make sure that if, you know, I'm still as comfortable today as I was the day that I, this idea came to me, and I feel like this is something that we need to do. I take, I take my oath of office serious, and it's not just about firearms, it's about every aspect of the Constitution. And if I can't square a decision we're making with the Constitution, I can't, I can't vote for it. That being said, you know, yeah, there are laws on books, but I feel like this is an opportunity for us to lead rather than follow. And with that, I would entertain, I would make a motion that we pass this ordinance as presented with one small change at the very top, to change it to twenty twenty.
It already was.
Okay, she already got it. Okay, that's, that would be my motion.
So there's a motion on the table, and now let's certainly open for further discussion on, before we go for a second.
I mean, this is a long.
Here from you. I think I, we had a rather lengthy discussion in the past.
Yes, but I just had a couple of questions. Utilize in section three, number two, that we shall not utilize any assets, Elkridge City funds or funds allocated by any entity to the Elkridge City in whole or in part to engage in any activity that aids any enforcement or investigation relating to an unlawful act in connection with personal firearms, firearm accessories, or ammunition. So if he is told by his people that he has to do this, we pay them to have him in our city.
Yes, but ultimately, his direction, unless martial law is declared like, I mean, to some extent, like what we had with the fire.
You're going to tell me can't do a job?
No, he's not going to do it, because he gets a marching order from us.
No, no, he doesn't. You are not.
He doesn't report to us. He reports to the county sheriff.
Yeah. So if you're told by your boss to come and do this, now whether or not he agrees with them, I'm just saying, if that's what it comes down to, correct? We just broke our own thing.
I'll get my job when I will do what the sheriff tells me to do.
Absolutely, absolutely, and you should.
I mean, obviously, I, you know, support you guys a hundred percent. We'll do whatever.
Yeah, but we're not your boss. You have a boss.
So I talk to his boss?
I know, I know, but Jared, what if, what if, okay, but in how many years will he, could we have a different boss? You know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to be realistic, like, this is not.
I've been told to forward whatever we pass to him, and he wants to push it through the town.
And I've already heard from two county commissioners. I mean, it's starting to get some groundswell in the neighborhood.
Okay, and what about how it says that we won't make people register their firearms?
Well, why should they?
Well, if the government says that we have to, then we, then we believe in following and sustaining the laws of the land, correct?
Only.
It must work sanctuary city.
So there's a legal concept that the state of Utah is supreme when it comes to the regulation of municipalities and county governments?
Right.
Utah is a legislative home rule state, and the only authority that the municipalities in this state have is what's granted to it by the state of Utah. This is likely completely unenforceable.
I said that last time. This is a photograph. You can't do anything with this. Holds no water.
If it's not enforceable, then why would we, why would we pass it?
Did I not say this?
Well, then, why don't we just call the state and tell them, you come down here and manage.
Just tell them that. Send your minions.
No, because here's the thing. You're doing it to make a political statement, not because it holds water.
I don't want the state coming here.
But, but effectively, that's what they're doing. One piece at a time. This is our chance to tell them how we feel.
This is our chance to make the news.
Well, and I may not, and I missed the work session. We might have talked about it. I mean, Tricia's got her concerns. I have some as well. I just, the civil offense in here is pretty significant.
I
That's more significant than like class B misdemeanor.
Don't worry, I already highlighted that guy too.
Also likely not enforceable, and if somebody challenged it, it would cost the city a fair amount of money to defend this.
What about the peace officer or not too? What is that? Is anyone a peace, I didn't know. Like, I needed clarity. I'm like, wait, why? You can pass it, and you probably will, because I think they're going to vote for it, but I don't, I don't understand some of the things in it. Who is a peace officer?
I mean, you'd have to prove that any law the state passes is unconstitutional. That's the only, that's the only course of reaction, course of action you really have as an individual or municipality in the state of Utah, is to go there.
It's going to be exceedingly expensive.
But what we can do is we can say, we're not going to in any way support through our, through funds or allocation of
We can't.
resources or anything like that, any law that we feel violates the Constitution. They could send their minions in to do it.
No, they can't stop it.
But then, but then would we need an ordinance, or can we just get by with a resolution?
It has to be, Martin's saying it has to be an ordinance if it's a legislative act.
Because initially, I presented it as a resolution.
And a resolution is a demand.
That's right.
So, like I said, I guess I'm struggling personally with it, because while I agree the Second Amendment is important, I mean, I have several guns myself, and I don't like people honking in my business. I think that portions of this are problematic. I don't know.
Nelson's not passing it to enforce it. I do know that. It's to make a statement, correct? Because we've already gone around, it's Nelson.
I think I probably, I know I wasn't part of this, I figured this already happened.
Also, right here, it says only in federal buildings. Do we need to, do you need to add like schools and churches? Does that not matter?
It doesn't matter. They, they, we don't have jurisdiction. They can do what they want.
In a school? No, that would be on the school district then?
No, the school district says you can't.
Okay, I didn't know.
And I believe their state code too that says you can't, so you know, they want to leave their children out, but that's their call. I mean, how I feel about it.
Some of this stuff is internally inconsistent. I mean, in one part, we say that we're not going to worry about anything that infringes our right to bear arms, accessories, ammunition. And then later on in the document, we say, but we'll go ahead and follow federal firearms regulations, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, you kind of have to follow the regulations. I can't go out and buy the police suppressed gun that's fully automatic without having tax stamps and all the other
I know.
mother may eyes that the government has put in place.
I understand that, but that's part of the problem, is in one part of the document, we say, we're going to ignore state fair regulations, and then literally one page later, we say we're going to follow them. So if that's the case, we need to decide, either we're going to follow the regulations, or we're going to make a statement that we aren't going to follow them. You see what I mean?
Yes, because in section E right here, it talks about no station making force laws, blah, 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 and then we talk about how, but we're going but we're going to make these laws, we're going to make this, and you have to follow ours, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Whoever, whoever wrote it probably wasn't an attorney in either of mine, but I do think that maybe.
It actually was written by attorneys, a whole crew of them. We got it from Benno Winters of American. It's a law.
The real problem I have is that the state, we're just a political subdivision, so we exist because the state of Utah legislature allows us to exist.
That is correct.
So we're subject to everything that they do.
Yes, we are.
That doesn't mean, though, that we have to be a willing participant in providing resources or funding or anything else to accomplish that.
No, I don't think.
That's not in state statute.
They don't have to, they can't force us to do it.
They can't force us to do anything, and we're going to say, you can pass any law you want, and we're not going to enforce it.
Well, we.
Well, I think.
If the mayor, if the sheriff decides to enforce it, that may be a different issue, but as far as the city of Elkridge goes, right? We may choose not to enforce it. We just won't do anything about it.
So if we have
That's what this basically says, we're not going to fund any enforcement.
But we are funding.
But other than the sheriff, who would we have to enforce it anyway, Mr. Mayor? Like, let's say hypothetically, the sheriff didn't do anything, and we had a gun issue in the city, who would we, who would we have enforced the law anyway if it were not for the sheriff?
No, it wouldn't be the enforcement of the, of like a criminal offense as far as like a gun, but somebody goes out and shoots off the gun or anything like that, right?
Because you do cover.
But when it takes the confiscation of a weapon, right, or even a red flag law potentially.
But who would we have to, who would Elkridge City have enforced, regardless if it's a criminal offense, a civil offense, a tax issue, a reporting issue? Who in Elkridge would enforce it if not for the sheriff?
It would be.
The sheriff's the only guy. Buck's not.
So.
I wouldn't go and ask him to do it.
So what we're saying is, we're not going to enforce it, but the reality is, if we had an issue, we, the city, would be enforcing it anyway.
It's an ordinance. Code enforcement officer can enforce it.
Our code enforcement guy would try to enforce like a, a tax issue on firearms or something?
It's a code.
No way, Jim.
Typically, what will happen is we'll get a call from the sheriff, somebody will say, what do you want us to do about this?
And you're going to say?
And I'll say, nothing.
Per this.
But isn't that what we do right now?
Not necessarily. Like I said, all this is saying in writing is that we won't ask our, our law enforcement to do anything about it.
So let me ask you this then. If we had an issue that you did want to do something about, what, I don't know what it is, just a hypothetical. Let's say we're fine, everything's rolling along, but somebody in the city is doing something we actually, we don't want, and neighbors are complaining, and the sheriff calls and said, what do you want me to do about it? If this ordinance passes, if you say take care of it, you are now liable for a $2,000 civil fine personally, because you asked that problem to be resolved?
Unless it's an unlawful act.
That's what this says.
Well, only if it's a.
If it's a criminal act.
If it's a criminal act.
The sheriff is very, he is very clear about.
I'm asking hypotheticals, because this stuff happens.
No, I know, it does, but it says that as long as it's not a criminal act or whatever, it's just, if they're like, I don't like Nelson building an arsenal.
That's what you call a red flag.
That's a thing. That's a.
It is, if there's a red flag and says, hey, I think Nelson's off his rock. Yeah, they walk up here and they start taking.
But then if they really thought there was an issue, it wouldn't even be just you, would it? It would go to, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, there'd be multiple people involved. So if somebody has a valid concern that triggers a red flag warning or whatever, and they call and say, I'm concerned, and the criteria that the state or the federal government set forth red flag is met, the city will just literally say, too bad.
Well, what do we say today?
I don't know.
Right now, there's a little thing called due process.
You can't.
What do we say?
You can't. There's no red flag law. They didn't pass it in the legislature, right? And we've been okay so far.
I'm only, I'm only bringing, I'm playing devil's advocate on all of this stuff, because by passing this, you, what we're doing is we're limiting the ability of the city to take action, even if we want to. Because if you decide that for some reason that we need to take action on a firearm issue, lawful or otherwise,
But.
if you do it, you are now liable for a $2,000 civil penalty personally.
Are we? Because currently, there is no, oh, wait, and I don't want to pass it, but if there isn't a red flag law on the books, and we pass it before then, then that isn't in this, so we don't have, so then how would that work?
Because if you read this, it says future laws or pass or not in harmony with the Constitution of the United States.
Is a red flag law in harmony with the Constitution?
No, there's this little thing called due process. You got the Second Amendment, you got the Ninth Amendment, the Tenth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment.
Okay, when Home Fry's getting 800 guns, I don't care what due process, there's no need for that.
Well, due process is determined by judicial judge, first of all. Well, nobody here can determine if due process is met, only a judge, probably a federal judge.
But if, but if there's a criminal act committed with a firearm or without, I mean, you go out and whip it out.
Yeah.
Sure.
They broke the law.
Okay, here's a question. Then how would you change it?
I mean, I've spent a little bit of time reading through this. I would probably remove the civil penalty first of all, a minimum civil penalty of that amount. To me, that's, like I said, I can
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to have a penalty.
I can probably smash windows and set somebody's car on fire and get a smaller fine than this.
I don't think there's necessarily to be a penalty.
I don't either. That's, to me, that's
Is this to give a teeth? Like, why are they?
I'm not the attorney that will.
I don't need a penalty in this.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just concerned, the reason I'm concerned is every single person in this room, if we pass this, you are personally on the hook. If you do anything to help our sheriff, you're on the hook for $2,000 fine.
Well, I can absolutely assure you, there's no way in heck that I would be helping the sheriff in that scenario.
I will.
I wouldn't be. I may. He'd be, it'd be him and his people. I'd be, they're on your own on this one.
I'll hide and cry, but.
And I mean, and if federal enforcers come in, I mean, not that this may happen, but
No, they'll be federal.
I would hate to have FBI people come into Elkridge because the city government. I would hate to have FBI people coming to Elk Ridge because the city government refuses to help law enforcement, I mean.
How does the sheriff department operate? Cuz they are independent. The sheriff is an elective office.
Yeah.
They get their authority by.
It's from the county.
But the sheriff gets it from the people?
No, so they're actually the highest form.
Yes.
Yeah, they're elected. He's the only elected law enforcement, right?
Every other law enforcement is appointed.
So they, they've got more power and authority than the guys that work for an hourly wage.
Cuz their law sheriff are saying, we're coming after you.
Yeah.
Each state.
I don't care what the state says.
As a, as a sovereign, each state has the ability, is given the police power to regulate the health, safety, and welfare of the, of the population. The county government through which the sheriff operates is granted that same authority from the state as a sovereign.
So what if I get left to the sheriff though?
Now, if they choose not to, that's something they can do.
That's what I mean.
With the state, that's a deal between the sheriff and the state of Utah. Whatever.
We're not the only state.
But that's where they get.
We're not the only state that's set up like this.
Oh, no, heavens no.
Right? And these things are going by crazy now, right?
Yep.
They're, they're making a statement to the legislature.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, like, I just wanna make sure I'm clear to everybody here, I support the second amendment, I'm a gun owner myself. I like having guns, I think it's important to have them, a lot of stuff in here is true. I'm concerned partly about the structure of this ordinance. I'm concerned about the penalty, there's no leeway on this, it is what it is, you're done. If you lift a finger to help, you're smashed with a pretty substantial fine, and it doesn't give the city any flexibility to do something if we feel like we need to. If this gets passed, we literally handcuff ourselves.
Well, whether it passes or not, you know where I'm gonna stand. If the city needs to take action, I won't support it.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
But I just, I just want everybody.
What you're really wanting to do is say.
Yep.
We're, we're, as a city, we're not really interested in violating the cons, the second amendment of the Constitution in any way, shape, or form. Now, if the state comes in and sends a sheriff up and that, we won't stop them.
I, I wouldn't try.
But I'm not gonna go and say, hey.
Unless you're gonna go to jail too.
There's no reason to.
No.
There's no reason to stop them. Right? But as far as the city goes, we're not gonna, we're not gonna start, you know, going crazy with red flag laws and all that kind of, well, I mean, they're gonna pass a law, we have to abide by it cuz we are a sub, political subdivision.
But.
And I don't wanna threaten the state.
But, but Mayor, the, this, the language in this bill actually says we'll ignore.
No, 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 that's why I said, this does not.
This holds no legal water, like, it's just, it's a statement. That's what I said to you, right? And you said, yep, that's why we're doing it, to make a statement.
I'm positive if this got challenged, it would not hold up.
It won't.
Ninety-nine percent. It would be, it would be struck. But if that's the case, then why are we doing it? I understand making a statement, and I actually support making it. I guess my question is this, and Nelson, you've probably researched this a lot more than me, is there some other way we can make this statement besides passing this ordinance? I'm fine sending emails to our legislators.
Well, a statement was made back on the 17th of December of 1791.
Oh. And there's hundreds of years of, of legal precedent that all.
And it's all messed up.
That's messed up the Constitution from then on.
Yeah. But I, I mean, but nonetheless, that's what it is, it's what we have. I'm happy to send a message to the state, I think this is a great idea to say we support second amendment and gun owners' rights, I just don't personally, I don't know if this is the right way to do it. If there's another way to do it, I'd love.
Well, you can go with me on February 8th up to the state Capitol Building.
All right. Sure, why not? Let's do it.
Did you wanna invite me?
You can tell.
No.
You're, you're gonna have to borrow one of your husband's guns.
Fighting his guns. I'm fighting for gun control, man.
Like, I, honestly, I like guns, I support this, I think it's important, I'm just, I'm concerned about what is written in here. I'm concerned personally that it will handcuff the city in case we need to do something, and I don't like the provision that requires a mandatory substantial civil fine. I, I, it's just my personal.
That's why I said, when that first came across and we felt more like a thing to do by resolution.
Can we not? That's why, that's my first question.
Right, that seemed more like a thing we were gonna state by resolution, and that would have no penalties, it would just say, here's where we, here's our current position.
Our moral position is.
Our moral position. There's no penalty in it. That becomes now, if there's no penalty and there's no law.
Right.
It's not legislative, it's administrative, and we can do a, by resolution. And that's just basically saying that, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna critique anything that happens relating to gun-related rights very critically before we invest in any money, resources, or anything else to advance that particular law.
Does that mean you make of a statement though, if you do a resolution?
Tell them where we stand.
Does it, Nelson?
Well, we got a children's hospital coming to Utah County, I think a resolution's made a difference.
And to me, a resolution is, to me, appropriate, right? We can say, this is what we believe in, without having to handcuff ourselves to penalize people. You know what I mean?
Well, if he took out the civil offense, would you then vote for it?
I would be certainly more inclined to.
Right.
I saw, I had trouble with Jay too, local governments, again, talking about what you talked about, the sovereignty of the state.
We get all our.
We only exist because the state allows us to.
Yeah.
And they clearly dictate what we can and cannot do.
Highlighted that area too.
And if the state passes an unconstitutional law, which they often do, there's a process.
They will get challenged by.
There's a process to resolve it, but it's extremely long and extremely expensive, right? I mean.
We're not gonna fund it.
Well, unless, well, unless somebody challenged Elk Ridge, right, the same issue.
No, I agree, I understand.
Then we would be funding it. There's another thing I'm worried about, like if somebody in the city's like, this thing's bull crap.
No, that's right, you could have a, a pro-gun group challenge it.
You could.
How might people fight some people?
We just can't. We would have to, cuz it would cost.
You'd just rescind it.
It would cost $100,000 to throw a constitutional challenge up against this thing.
Would cost more than that.
At the, just to get a start.
Just for the city, right? That, that'd be a.
Let's look at, go and, let's look and see what it looks like as a resolution.
Okay.
So, I, I, cuz I wouldn't mind having it passed by the council officially adopt a resolution for our position. That we support the second amendment.
Yeah, I mean.
Right?
Is this taking the wind out of your sails? You just want it done one way or another.
The wind was taken out of my sails yesterday.
When I.
And poor Bill's hit the floor acting like.
Yeah, they're nuts.
I mean, they're, they're absolute idiots. I'm sorry, but they are looking idiots.
I gotta read those bills.
How can somebody be a Republican and pass red flag laws? You, you can't. I mean, that's like, that's like calling me, I'm being a Republican.
Are you seriously ripping on Mitt? You would love that man.
Absolutely, that's what I feel about.
I got a Christmas present.
So, if we look at it as a resolution, right, I mean, there's some language in here, well, and I know I wanted, you know, it talks about all these other cases or whatever, but I think there's, there's some wording in here, what was it?
I read most of it.
He took it out, he took out the one about.
Would you guys like to read those cases by the way?
Shooting it.
I read them all.
I, I've read them all.
What, what is it? What's the correct word for shooting a gun? The, the legal word?
Discharge.
Discharge. You took that out. Yeah, the discharge of the weapon.
So, let's see here, what is it, A four? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, A four. Any act forbidding possession, ownership, or use, or transfer, I'm gonna focus on use. Um, we may have some laws on the books that may or may not be coherent with it. So, let me have passed.
Under four?
Limits.
Well.
All right, Jared, you're in section four?
No, three, section, there's, let's see here.
We can.
A four.
A four, sorry.
A four.
Says we're used, so I, I think we'd have to look at the panel's.
Any act forbidden possession, ownership, or use, or transfer.
Other than pursuant to federal law, background check requirements, or purchasing FFL dealers.
But earlier we stated that we won't support anything.
Right, there's, there's internal inconsistency in the document. In one part we say, we won't support these, and in another we say we will.
I, I'm in, I'm just gonna say this, I'm in favor of passing something to make the statement, yes, we back the second amendment. But with that being said, I think, you know, documents be consistent, I'm not aware, right? And I think our laws that are on the books would then have to be evaluated to see if they're consistent also. That's my favorite.
Can I ask my last question? Who is a peace officer that enforces ordinance in V, wait?
We have one, we have one. He said right back there, the contract.
You're a peace officer?
That's another, that's another.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
I have never heard of that.
No?
Seriously?
Did I grow up under a rock?
We.
Well, just sometimes he's not reduced.
I'm from Idaho, I'm from Idaho.
It never takes.
Peace officer?
People who fall away as well.
The academy that we attend, is the peace officer standard a drink?
I have no idea. Well.
So Nelson.
I graduated from the U of T, so I don't.
You wanna, you wanna pull your motion or do you wanna go forward?
Well, it's gonna hit the same result.
So you just wanna rescind it and move on?
Yep.
We'll move on.
Corey, do you wanna rewrite?
I just wanna give you the opportunity to take it all the way through.
Yeah.
Corey says he'll rewrite it for you.
I won't rewrite, I'd be happy to.
No, you're gonna rewrite it.
I would be happy to help work on this though.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, yeah, truly.
I, I'm, I would like to see us do something.
Maybe I would even be, I'm surprised, don't be.
Okay, so, we'll work, we'll, we'll work on that one. The Sumo representative decision, so last time we met, we mentioned that we've gotta have a, a representative on the Sumo board, it was Paul Crook that was doing that. Royce Paul today or sometime found out that the meetings are held.
Cause you're gonna be at. You better just get.
Next meeting is February 13.
Get your big boy pants on and.
The first meeting.
So that's, uh.
Second Thursday of the month.
Second Thursday at 6:00 PM in Spanish four.
And it's a monthly?
Is it always a quarter?
Quarter.
Well, the.
Quarter. The next trade going, I'm going for that.
So.
Wait, why do you have to go too?
I go with this.
I need to have a representative on, I need to have a representative on the Sumo board.
Can I?
To attend every four, every quarter.
What is it? I'm just gonna come clean, I don't know what that is.
It's all about gun control.
All right, well, that's easy. That's easy enough.
Nelson votes.
Yeah, okay, so it's the South Utah Valley Municipal Water Users Association, and they, they're basically a entity that was created to help cities on the south end of Utah County have an access point for water rights and for regional planning with regards to sewer treatment. And, uh.
Okay.
So we, we own, we own a bunch of water rights up in there. I mean, we own six.
This, this.
I think it's sixteen.
This board owns the property, right, but we are members of this.
Yes.
Of this.
And our ownership is based on the percentage that we were assessed at the time of purchase, which is based on.
There's property down by the lake.
Yeah. Down by the.
So they meet every quarter and talk about.
Paul had this job before.
Yes.
Yeah. Does everybody else already have this?
Boring, boring stuff, I've been there. She'd be happy to trade you.
I'll say yes.
Celebration.
I, I've done, this is.
You think that's easy?
No, don't.
Also, time to meetings get canceled. Frankly, I feel like the relevancy of this entity isn't what it used to be, and we should look at somehow trying to divest ourselves of the assets that we hold because, I mean, we don't, we don't need the ground down by the lake and, and some of the cities are holding on to it cuz they want wetlands. Let them buy us out.
Well, weren't we considering joining another water?
We're not gonna. I threw out. Everybody's doing their own sewer plant, so you're not having a regional sewer plant.
I threw out the idea of, okay, if this sewer plant's never gonna happen, or it's really far from Elk Ridge, maybe we oughta pull membership out of that, ownership, whatever, money, and throw it into Payson, cuz that's where we're sending our sewer, and go jointly with them on a.
So we have some say.
But that's, I don't know, that's an idea.
Okay, yeah.
Put the money where we're actually.
Well, and, and the, the thought process with this previously was, each of the cities had their own sewer treatment plans, and they would become the pre-treatment plants for the ultimate final treatment before it's dumped into Utah Lake. So it'd come out so squeaky clean, you could walk over there with a cup, put it on the outflow and drink it right away. That was, that was their, that was their goal.
I would think that's a bust.
But yeah, that's.
I'd want to see you drink.
So then we have, they have, there's also, there's also water rights involved, right? Because there are a set of water rights that we have reserved for us, that we could purchase if we so desire.
Yep.
But they're expensive.
Yeah, didn't we talk about buying ourselves out of those, like, with Mayor Shelley? Do you remember that?
Yeah, and there's a term on that all that have gas, so.
Yeah. I mean, those water rights are, are good in the sense that they are already assigned to our point of diversion.
Yes.
So for developer care, and the age of those water rights are old enough that if we needed water rights that were older so that we could drill a well where all of our neighbors couldn't protest, those are the kind of water rights you want because first in line, first in use. That's how, that's how it works. So, I mean, there, there's some value.
There's value in those water rights.
But then the cities went out, created another agency called the Nevo Water Agency, which is effectively taking, it's like this board without sewage. For, for lack of.
And they've done a lot more work lately.
I thought we were gonna join that.
Well, they want a bunch of money.
Yeah, they wanted.
But then remember studying Lua, we were gonna do that, no?
I don't know where all that matters.
Yeah.
I, I never. If we pulled out and another city pulled out, this is all.
This, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised Springville hasn't pulled out.
And on the Nevo, again, Salem, the other day in that meeting, they really recommend that we get involved in the Nevo.
How much was it to join that?
It was like 25 grand, wasn't it?
Or more, was it more?
Well, I'll go back in a minute if I can.
I swear, they wanted like an insane amount. We just started laughing.
Well, but I think Jared got it, I mean, you know, say, Payson had to start their plant, or they're in the, just the beginnings of it.
Yeah, they're in the.
They have no room now to wiggle, they have to build one, right? They've used up all their time that the state given them pretty much, and if we could go with them and say, hey, let us pitch in a, some money on this, right?
My biggest aim would be just to have a say instead of them just sending us a bill every year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, is that then instead of, then instead of them billing us at their rate and we adding on our percentage, right? We'd be treated more like first class.
We'd be treated like a part-
Donors, right? And we would just be giving our rates the same as the Payson rates. And if we come up with a solution like that, that'd be a huge win for our residents.
And it'd be good to control what we're responsible for, because when our sewage flows through brand new pipes all the way to the plant, and we end up having to pay for them to repair older pipes because they go into the plant, I don't really like that so much.
But it would take some money to do that. It would take money to go to Payson and say, we want to participate in a different way.
If we got out of Sumwah, do you think they would help?
Autonomic land would be worth.
Well-
Or if we could transfer the land.
So land, land purchase collectively, I think, was three million.
Do they need all of us? Do they need any, like, wetlands, Payson?
They cut the whole area off of Earlhead where they're developing, and that's all wetlands.
That's what I said. Do they need any?
Yeah.
I know, so maybe in Lua, we can give-
In fact, ironically, now, Payson's the one that pitched that idea, one time when I was meeting with them and Hal Shelley and Corbin. So-
Transfer might be as good as anything.
Amen.
There might be some opportunities that way. But I think that we need to start-
Finding out if we can get out, and what we can, how we get out.
Hey, Weldon Hills wants out, too, so.
Out of Sumwah?
Yeah.
No, there's none. It's just like-
Do you have connections in Payson, right? Can you find out if we can get on them?
All right, so we need somebody to- If you throw money at it, they'd let us do it.
They would?
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're-
Let's do it.
They'd like their, bomb it out there.
They're, they're-
That's where I'm camera.
They've got their debts, you know.
Yeah, they're-
Let's do it.
They're limited because of their, where they borrow. Yeah. I think it'd be, I think, I think it's a good, I think it's another avenue, another avenue angle to work close with Payson to see if it's not a win-win situation for us all. I don't ever see us doing our own sewer plant. I don't think we have the hands and-
Don't even say, Dave, don't even suggest it.
We're sending it at twenty grand.
That's disgusting. We're not-
Or twenty mil, sorry. Twenty million, and we don't have any place with the water. And so-
I can't live by one.
We're sending it there now. Let's, let's party, join with them. And then, you know, we may not be in the driver's seat being all, we may be navigating.
Hey, if we could just be, have a seat at the table, right?
Well, it really is about just making the best situation that you can for the two cities. And us coming in, they wouldn't have to spend as much, and then maybe we're not having another increase for a while. If that's, if that's all we do, I think it's a great move for the city. I can reach out to Bill.
Okay.
And see if he's in it, any way interested in something like that. I mean-
In the meantime-
In the meantime, who's going on the fourteenth for us?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, February thirteenth.
I'm gonna be a Disneyland story.
If everyone else already has a job, considering that Paul is not here or whatever, I can do this if you would like.
Okay, I motion on Cory.
Is that the assumption, anyway?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we tried this last time. You weren't here, we tried to do it, right?
I tried to do that.
He didn't, and the mayor actually-
He didn't come, so.
But we didn't know when the meeting was, how often they were meeting, and that's the only reason we-
I was afraid it was monthly.
And because the-
I will graciously take this job.
It used to be monthly.
This is an old-
And they're like, what, not even an hour?
I'll show them, make it happen.
Yeah, most of them are like twenty minutes.
All right.
Great. I'm ready for a motion.
I just gave you one.
Okay, we have a motion on it. Nelson second, it's on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Don't even, don't give them the choice.
Uh, motion passes. All right, guys. Financial review. I don't know if you had a chance to look it over. Royce, is there anything we ought to call out? We're tracking just exactly where we want to track, I mean-
Can I ask a question? On page seven, is this park construction?
Yeah.
What's that hundred thousand dollar ticket for?
Do you remember the parking lot? I'll bet you that's what it is.
I put parking lot, is that the parking lot funds, or is that for my pavilion? That's what I'm trying to get to heart of.
She's got to go to the county first to get the pavilion.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta meet with Royce and figure out how to do all that.
Yeah, we need to have our meeting.
Yeah, we need to have a meeting.
That's what, that's, yeah.
But is this to hopefully get going on all that?
Yes.
And what happened to the money with the parking lot? Is that just-
That was in last year's budget.
That was in last year's budget. So is that sitting there already approved and-
Gone.
Gone.
It's gone?
It got reallocated.
Reallocated. Now, here's the question. What about the people we grant to the parking lot, too? Are we, like, in breach of contract?
Granted.
Oh, you mean, you mean, awarded, awarded the contract, yeah?
I think at this point, we're-
It's water under the bridge.
But they could, could they have?
They could charge us for going out and putting stakes up.
Yeah, the survey, the pavilion.
Pavilion, okay.
But yeah, you got money sitting right there.
I know. I gotta make my dreams come true.
You could get that money from the county. You could get your parking lot. Feel the everything.
I might put a pool in.
So, kind of related to that, I've heard rumors that NIBO has that elementary school fully designed.
It is designed. I've seen the picture. I've seen the drawings.
Like, it's like that. And they're, they're just, they're redoing the middle school, and they're gonna see where, how that populates out.
I'm telling you right now-
The last I heard is still way out there. I've actually seen the drawings.
I talked to the powers that be. It's not even on, they said in the next eight years, they have planned out. It's not even written down. It's not even on.
They said it should be nine years because the-
But I sat in the school district, and they pulled them out for it.
Will you do me a favor and find out when the next school board meeting is?
Yes.
Where are you going?
Yes. I want to be on public comment.
About our-
Group about name.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Anything on here?
Keith, Cory, a question on animal control.
Why not this year?
It's, is that the assessment from the county?
Yeah.
How do they base that assessment? On population or use, or do we know?
I don't know.
Because it's quite a bit higher.
Yeah, it's been trending upwards.
What, what line is it?
Animal control.
Right in the center of the-
Eighteen forty-sixty.
Forty-nine hundred bucks.
I believe it's based on-
Is that because of the lose one?
In the past, it used to be based on how many animals got hauled in from our community. But I don't know-
I think that's part of the formula.
Part of the formula, and then part of its population base.
And how many horses get out? That took you like an hour to get those things, didn't it?
They've already charged us for that, already.
Yeah, we've got it.
Wait, we got charged for that, for real?
Yeah, we got the bill from them.
Yeah.
No, they billed us like a lump, some kind of thing.
Didn't you call the horses?
So we got our second bill.
I saw that.
So we went over.
We did go over it, I had it.
It wasn't-
But it's out of our, animal control is separate from, more importantly.
So like when you-
Can't we just do our own?
Trap a feral cat, and you call the animal control and they can pick it up.
When animal control's not on duty, it falls back on us, so we take care of those.
You don't get called if anything happens, let's be honest.
Pretty much. People who make their children raise, but that kind of thing can-
We have guns. We can take care of ourselves. I'm ready.
Urban hunting.
No!
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
On the south end of town, away from the homes.
You try to pass that.
If they're going out, we're going on. You gotta approve the minute for January fourteenth. Turn it on. Any time you really want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our January fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting.
You got a second, Jim, on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed?
According to-
I'm gonna abstain since I was not prisoned. Thank you. Thanks, Lord.
All right. And we can, I think, they have twenty-four hours notice. They have to post.
Yeah, I just, I literally did not know.
You literally-
I wasn't sure if you were where. I didn't know until eleven P.M. the night before that I had to leave, so that was-
Isn't, isn't that great to be the old man on the toilet?
No, it's not. It was awful.
I can't imagine getting that. Yeah, you're, you're going to Texas.
The next morning, yeah.